I believe in the United States of America as a government of the people, by the people, for the people, with just power to derive from the consent of the government, a democracy and republic, a sovereign nation of many sovereign states, a perfect union, one inseparable, established upon the principles of freedom, equality, justice, and humanity for which American patriots sacrificed their lives and fortunes. I therefore believe it is my duty to my country to love it, to support its constitution, to obey its laws, to respect its flag, and defend it against all enemies.
Thank you, everyone. Diane?
Yes, we have Jackie Eaton. When your name is called, please into the microphone at the lecture, you say your name and your address.
Thank you. All right, Jackie Eaton, Edward Lane, me again. I watched the Bess presentation online, and it's the same issue I kind of have, is that I'm wondering why the public didn't hear about this proposal until December, when boards and commissions and wetlands and fire and mayor's office knew about it since October. And I really feel that there needs to be more transparency in this town government, and maybe a public, like this has been brought up before, like a public information page on the town website with important issues, like something like this, so that we don't learn about it right when it's going to closed window, or decisions need to be made, like, you know, not all of us can spend every minute watching every meeting, you know what I mean? That's why we have boards and commissions to inform us of what's going on, right? So, that I find really unfortunate that we just learned about this. I believe that from watching that, I think that we really need a professional assessment and some sort of secret done, and environmental impact statement, a public health assessment, and, I don't know, I think that they should find, the Flatiron Company should find an industrial zone for their project and not being residential. I really don't want to be all NIMBY about this, but when it comes to the necessary infrastructure for clean energy, I want clean energy, I support clean energy, we need battery storage facilities, it's important to have this infrastructure, but does it need to be on our aquifer or right next to the Aspotuck River, the West Aspotuck? To me, that's a little insane. And so I just hope that we can go to the Siting Council with some strong recommendations and reasons why it shouldn't be near our water and on our aquifer and in a residential zone. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, Julie Bailey. Please state your name and your address.
I'm Julie Bailey, and I live at 144 Fox Rock Road in New Milford, and I've lived here for, gosh, hate to say it publicly, 35 years. I just learned about the Treebeard proposal for the large lithium battery utility scale energy storage facility just off Aspotuck Ridge Road, near several residential neighborhoods, but I've read enough to really concern me. Treebeard is owned by the Boulder, Colorado-based Flatiron, which in turn is owned by Hull Street Energy, a Washington, D.C.-based private equity firm, the same kind of private equity firm that has owned, I think it is, what is the property name at the end of the road that Dr. Pai owned?
Oh, yeah, Nestle's.
For almost a decade now. Anyway, this distancing helps contain liability for accidents like thermal runways or fiery explosions that have hit at least seven other lithium battery storage facilities in the U.S., in Europe, and Asia since 2024. Moss Landing, California, is the world's largest battery energy storage system, or BESS for short, and the major fire, which was one of those there, apparently led to evacuations and toxic smoke impacting residents for some distance. Treebeard isn't the first out-of-town energy-related project that saw New Milford as an easy mark. It won't be the last. One, folks who've been here long enough to remember the pitched two-year battle with Sempra Energy involving hundreds of supporters from throughout Southern Litchfield County, that gave our plucky little town that organized all of that, the only unanimous turn down, nine-zero, from the Siting Council in the 90s during the energy deregulation frenzy of the late 1990s. Or, a little later, actually more recently, when Texas-based Panda Power gave up and fled back to Texas after just six weeks of mounting popular opposition to their proposal to build a power plant at Century Brass. Flatiron, the owner of Treebeard, tells us that all their operating projects are incident-free, but that is self-reported, not independently audited, and their track record seems to be only beginning. So here are just six of the risks that their New Milford project would entail, and they aren't pretty. One, thermal runway fire and explosion risk and multi-day fires, toxic smoke and toxic climbable gas release posing severe health risks. Three, proximity to residential neighborhoods. Flatiron itself and its material that they shared with us states that they have faced major opposition to their projects when their projects abut residential neighborhoods, and where there is no existing state safety framework, is there one in Connecticut that we know about? Impacts on the Hoosatonic and the West Aspotuck Rivers. Limited access for firefighting on two narrow two-lane roads. Hazardous runoff. Water used for firefighting can create toxic contaminated runoff that needs very specialized cleanup. The need for specialized fire suppressants calling for uptraining of area volunteer fire stations. In closing, I remind you that earlier I mentioned that Flatiron won't be the last to take advantage of the proximity of access to the nearby power grid and the seemingly unlimited water from the nearby Hoosatonic River for cooling. Our history with Sempra, Panda, and now Flatiron emphasizes that there is probably only one strategy that will allow our town to determine who, when, and most importantly, where they get to develop a major project that "they", not "we" want. This is it. Why don't we think about rapidly accelerating developing our riverfront from Veterans Bridge to Century Brass and that segment of the New Milford River Trail multi-use trail?
Excuse me, Julie, one minute.
Let me go faster.
Our residents want, and that we have been planning and seeking grants since 2017, almost nine years ago. My last paragraph, "That's so potential outside profit-seeking investors understand the framework in which we seek out-of-town investments that do not levy the burden of such frightening potential risks to our family and our children." Otherwise, last sentence, "The proximity of unlimited river water and easy access to the power grid will be like catnip for heavy industrial and potentially polluting out-of-town visitors." Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
No more?
Oh, sorry. Thomas Kapsiak. Please state your name and...
I'm Tom Kapsiak, 94th Long Dunton Road. I have sent all of you a copy of the email that I sent to the mayor on December 4th. I want to read it into the record this evening for the record of this meeting. Again, it was addressed to the mayor. "Please let me know what the process will be to assemble and transmit a response to the proposed Flatiron Energy Treebeard Battery Storage Project. I will help if there is an interest in my assisting with this. Hopefully, the town will engage the firms that the zoning commission normally uses as consultants to review the proposed project, so that a data-based critique can be provided to the Connecticut Siting Council and to PURA. As I mentioned last evening, last evening at this point being the meeting on the 3rd, I am concerned that the proposal includes very little detail, so preparing a thoughtful response to the proposal will be more difficult than it might otherwise be. I am particularly concerned by the absence of any backup data supporting the assertions that there is a need for the project and that the Aspotuck Ridge Road site is the optimal location for the project. My sense is that if in fact there is a need for the battery storage facility, it should be left to Eversource in collaboration with the relevant state agencies to confirm the need and the appropriate site, and then for Eversource to be responsible for the engineering, construction, operation, and maintenance of the facility, which would be located on an Eversource property. It should be clear that this project is connected to the region's electrical network and not the local distribution network, so the issues related to the need and location should be reviewed in that context. I am not persuaded that Flatiron has done that analysis. They also have not provided that backup information to the town. The proposal that has been presented to the community lacks sufficient detail for an assessment of the impact on the affected area of the construction, operation, and maintenance, and ultimately the decommissioning of the facility if it requires disassembly and removal from the site rather than a simple upgrade as the components reach the end of their useful life. I am also concerned by the multiple layers of LLCs that are involved with this project and will be involved with the operation and maintenance, making accountability for the project more difficult than it would be if Eversource were the party responsible for the development and operation of the facility. It should be obvious that what is being proposed is simply a profit-making-off effort sponsored by a venture capital organization that is intended to benefit from the fluctuations in the spot market price of electricity in the grid over the course of a day and which has little or nothing to do with the benefit to the community, whatever the benefits to the larger electrical grid might be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hillary Ram.
Hillary Ram, 154 Guernsey Lane. Fifty-four days ago, on October 15th, Mayor Bass was hand-delivered and emailed the entire draft proposal for the battery energy storage facility located on Aspotuck Ridge Road. Representative Bill Buckby, Senator Steve Harding, and every member of the town council at that time also received this letter. The letter specified December 15th as the deadline for questions. That's in one week. So, what have we learned from the proposal now that we've read it? On December 6th in 2022, Flatiron attended a New Milford Department Services Team meeting to introduce this proposed project and preliminary plans. In this meeting, they discussed the Connecticut Siting Council permitting process and 60-day municipal consultation requirement. That's what we have one week left of. One follow-up action taken by Flatiron at the request of the town of New Milford stemming from these meetings was a feasibility analysis of the Century Brass mill location as a potential alternative development location, but this was deemed not possible. In September 2024, the Inland Wetlands approved the design for the new DPW building at the Century Brass location. These two things are connected. New Milford, there was a headline in New Milford newspaper, May 18th, 2025, "New Milford to Review a Solar Panel Plan for Century Brass Site." Quote, "A major solar array could be installed on the former Century Brass property where the New Milford Public Works Facility will be built," and the mayor presented this to the town council. It was a $5 million proposal. On August 1st, 2025, Flatiron had a meeting with Mayor Bass and Wetland Enforcement Officer Jim Furlough. From this meeting, Flatiron changed the layout, the design. The current design no longer requires access via the bridge, so they were in consultation, conversation, negotiations. From these meetings, their outcomes, and the total silence from our mayor, it is clear that he approves this project or is working with them, and we know he's pushing for the DPW to move to Century Brass. None of this was mentioned before the election, which is a shame, because it would have given the public an opportunity to vote on both of these projects, which they deserve. Perhaps we could have learned the estimated costs for the DPW building and the annual maintenance costs. Perhaps we could have discovered other locations suitable for both of these projects that could have benefited our town. But that did not happen. We did not learn any of this until December 2nd at that informational zoning meeting that not many people even were notified about. So, a vote for Pete was a vote for the battery project and for the DPW at Century Brass, but you didn't even know it. So, both of these projects are over our aquifer. We must protect our water. It is our greatest resource. We should not even be here right now. Let me say this again. We must protect our water. I'm here tonight to support the request to empower the mayor to communicate with the Wetlands and Aquifer Protection to add the Flatiron Energy Treebeard BESS project to the next regularly scheduled Wetlands and Aquifer Protection Meeting, which is scheduled for December 11th, 2025, in an effort to start the public hearing process, per 22A-32 of the Connecticut General Statutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Tim Ru. State your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Tim Ru, and I'm the owner of Quiet Rain Farm at Wells, 8 Wells Road. We're a longstanding and community-involved equestrian facility here in New Milford. Our farm serves not only as a home to many horses, but as a place where children, families, and neighbors gather daily for riding lessons, educational programs, and community events. We are deeply rooted in this town, and we care about its future. I'm here today to speak to you with a strong opposition to the proposed Flatiron Battery Storage Facilities. Battery storage fires, known as thermal runaway events, produce toxic fumes and gases that move quickly and cannot be predicted or controlled. Unlike people, our horses cannot be sheltered in sealed environments or rapidly evacuated. If a battery fire were to occur, we would have no way to protect the animals in our care from inhaling poisonous fumes. Horses exposed to toxic smoke can suffer permanent lung damage within minutes, and many do not survive. It's not just a matter of inconvenience for our business, it's a life-or-death risk for every animal on our farm. Quiet Rain Farm is an active part of this community. We host programs for local children, partner with families, and bring people together in a healthy agricultural environment. The proposed facility threatens not only the well-being of our animals, but the safety and continuity of a farm that has become an important piece of New Milford's identity. The potential hazards associated with large-scale battery storage do not align with the agricultural, residential, or recreational character of the area that is being proposed for the construction of these battery storage facilities. A single emergency event could cause irreversible harm, not just to farms in the area, but to nearby households, schools, and the community as a whole. I urge the town, and specifically the town council, to reconsider approving the project that carries such high-risk consequences with no apparent effective emergency plan that could protect our livestock, children in the area, or residents in the area. Our community deserves growth that is safe, sustainable, and compatible with the people and animals who call this town home. Thank you all for your time and for considering the voices of those who live and work directly within the zone that will be affected.
Oh, gosh, I didn't see all of that. Wow. Dawn Baldassari.
Dawn Baldassari, 74, Old Ridge Road. I had emailed a letter to the mayor, the council, zoning, wetlands today, and I actually forwarded that email also to Harding, Callahan, to Bushbaum, and to Buckby. I'm respectfully requesting that the Flatiron Treebeard Battery Energy Storage System proposal be added to the December 11 Wetlands agenda, and that the commission schedule a public hearing pursuant to the Connecticut General Statutes 22A-32. Residents were only notified of this project last week, despite communication with town officials reportedly dating back to 2022. Given the limited time remaining under public notice requirements, a hearing is essential to ensure transparency, allow for informed public participation, and to build trust in the review process. Key concerns warranting the public hearing include sitting in an R-40 residential zone over an aquifer within the 100- and 150-year floodplains and proximate to Class A watersheds that are sensitive habitat, potential for lithium battery fire events that can be prolonged and produce hazardous fumes posing risk to public health, water quality, and emergency response capacity, continuous industrial noise in a residential area reports are indicating approximately 60 decibels at the nearest resident, impacts on property values, insurance risks, and wildlife, the developers' limited track record, and unresolved safety environmental mitigations. When asked about community benefits, excuse me, the developers' response to date has been unsatisfactory to me. New Milford does not experience rolling brownouts, and local economic benefits appear minimal. The sitting advantages identified by Flatiron seem to accrue primarily to the developer: low grid interconnection, low cost, despite the availability of other locations within Connecticut that don't involve residential zoning, wetlands, or protected species. Given the scale of potential environmental impacts, risks to wetlands and the aquifer, the health effects of continuous noise in a residential area, and significant public concern, it's appropriate and prudent that the commission to hold a public hearing. Thank you for your attention, and I appreciate it.
Next, Tim Harkin. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Tim Harkin, and I live at 11 Meadow Ridge Lane. I do want to say from the top, and this is my wife, Miki.
Same address, Miki Harkin.
The idea of a battery storage facility under the right circumstances does make sense. Almost none of those circumstances exist here. Not in a residential neighborhood, not by one of the cleanest rivers in the state. So, having said that, I did also want to speak upon kind of the transparency and how nobody seemed to really know about this until like Thanksgiving weekend. Ms. Ram did a good summary of some of the points that I was gonna make, but just to kind of hit the bullet points on that, the first contact was made with the town on December 6th, 2022, so three years ago. There were updates to the project to certain town personnel in July and August of this year. So, saying, you know, the town found out about this on October 15th this year is not entirely correct. It's not really correct at all. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the scale of this project. I think people might have a hard time understanding how big it will really be. They're gonna have Tesla Megapack 2XL batteries. Those batteries are 30 feet long and about 5 and 1/2 feet wide, so if this is an eight-foot table, you know, put together two and a half of those, that's the length. Now do that 208 times, because they're proposing 208 batteries. Each of those batteries, fitting on that, you know, that footprint, is 84,000 pounds. I worked as a structural engineer for many years, was licensed in several states. When we would design bridges, like I designed like major suspension bridges, the truck we use as our standard design is only 80,000 pounds. It's two tons less. So, just the scale of like, how are they going to get these into town? Are they gonna come over Bridge Street and then up Youngsfield Road, or are they gonna come around Boardman? You know, it's just the scale of it is unbelievable. The drawings are very preliminary. They're on the website. It does look like, the setback from the street looks very, very tight, but the dimensions are not really there, for whatever reason. One of the things they do have on their drawing is that there will be a stormwater retention basin pretty much right at the street, and the dimensions on that are 25 feet wide by 120, 120 feet long. That's the size of three Colonials. The scale of this, I think, you know, I'm trying to use these examples that people can relate to, because it is massive. So, you know, I agree with a lot of the other issues brought up with the environmental issues and things along those lines, but I just, people really need to get a grip on, this is not going to be, you know, like a little substation. This is going to be gargantuan. Thank you.
Next, and perhaps last, Darrell Kirkland, doctor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and...
Sorry, name and address.
I'm sorry, Darrell Kirkland, 12 Old Mill Road up in Northville. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm here to provide an update on recent activities of the New Milford Community Emergency Response Team, the CERT. We have had a busy autumn, fortunately without emergency activations. Firstly, the fall CERT basic training class occurred in October, and we are very pleased to announce that another three people completed training, making a total of six new members to join our team in 2025. We assisted with crowd and traffic management at the heavily-attended Halloween trunk-or-treat event on October 26th. The following Sunday, November 2nd, more than a dozen of us attended a live burn training at the County Fire Training Academy outside Torrington, performing accountability, which is keeping track of who is doing what, where, and when at a busy fire scene, so all firefighters and CERT members who enter a scene are known to safely leave when the incident is done. And we also perform firefighter rehabilitation, which includes providing a controlled area where firefighters get rest and replenishment as they cycle in and out of the fire environment. Under our current Training Officer, David Yonker, we continue to prepare and train for the roles and responsibilities we can expect, and assure you that CERT will continue to help out whenever the call comes. On November 20th, the team re-elected Kathy Rehog and Al Tanny as our CERT president and chief respectively for 2026. Winter weather readiness was the topic at the chat with the mayor on December 3rd, and if you did not know, I risked my reputation by saying yes to a white Christmas this year. I still think so. Ahead on December 13th, we will again help at the Parade of Lights festivities, prepare for cold, and possibly snow. In 2026, the New Milford CERT has a major milestone event, its 20th anniversary in service to the town. We are starting to plan activities to commemorate this, and will welcome your support. We expect to again hold CERT basic training classes in the spring and fall of 2026. I will continue in my role heading CERT community outreach, and welcome opportunities to talk with community groups about the CERT and emergency preparedness. An easy way to contact us, whether with a question, to request a talk, or to express interest in joining our volunteer team, is through our website, www新milfordcert.org. Our email address is at the bottom of the home webpage. In closing, the CERT wishes everyone assembled here, viewing online, and all the people in New Milford to have a a safe, healthy, and happy holiday season ahead. And on behalf of the CERT, thank you all for what you do.
Katie?
All righty. Let's start with the item. Item, like to move item 4A and B that we approved of the town council meeting minutes from November 24 and the tax collector information. Thank you, Tom.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Mary Jane, is that approved?
She said aye.
Okay, thank you. And no opposed? No? One abstention. Okay, thank you.
Mayor's comments?
Okay. Real quick, a big huge thank you to VFW Commander Mayor and VFW American Legion Commander Delancey and President of the Women's Auxiliary Kathy Mayer for the Pearl Harbor Ceremony that we had this past Sunday. Thank you, Councilman Mercer, for being there as well. A big thank you also to Navy Commander Retired Commander Erickson, Chief Seruto, Deputy Chief Wilcoxen, American Legion Chaplain Sullivan for all their words as well as as New Milford continues to honor those that paid the ultimate sacrifice on an infamous day, or one of the few towns to continue to do that. Also this month, you may see on the town flagpoles the birthdays of the National Guard and the Space Force, and we are flying both of those service flags on the town hall flagpole. And thank you to all those men and women that are currently serving. Big thank you to the Milford High School Band and Parents Organization for the beautiful wreaths that you see here at Town Hall. Want to thank our facilities team for putting the wreaths up at Town Hall. And today I had the pleasure of going to Candlewood Valley Health and Rehabilitation to wish Gordon Hill a happy 100th birthday. Yesterday was his birthday, but we wanted to thank him for service as he is a World War II veteran, Navy veteran. So a big happy birthday. Also thank you to the Lions Club as they hosted the senior Christmas party yesterday at the VFW. Great to see so many of our seniors there and joining a great meal provided by the Lions Club. Big thank you to the Lions Young Leos, Scout Troop 58, and our Senior Center Director Jasmine and the Senior Center Team for their assistance in making that such a great event. Was able to stop by Murph on Sunday to watch the New Milford Youth Wrestling have their kickoff classic, and it was great to see all of these young wrestlers, and these are very young ones, both boys and girls. And in speaking to Dylan Tuz, one of the coaches there, the women's group is the fastest growing part of the wrestling group, which is amazing. And I thank you to all the coaches, the athletes, the referees, the volunteers, and parents for that kickoff. Great to see. Also, Galveston Fire Department, I see the chief, I think he's still back there. Thank you for a great ham dinner that was up there, and those proceeds go to help Galveston Fire Department. And again, a big huge thank you to all of our fire, whether they be Galveston, Water Witch, or Northville, that protect us all. Thank you to the Milford Police Department and Odd Fellows as they did their toy drives this weekend, and that was to help the Santa Fund. And this year, speaking to Vana Butera, our Associate Service Director, we are going to help over 500 kids in need in New Milford. So a big huge thank you to everyone that has gone above and beyond. There's still a chance, if you'd like to, you can drop off a toy at Social Services here at the mayor's office. Any toy helps a young child in need. Big congratulations to the Milford Bulls D12 Cheer Team, coaches and parents. They took second place in the Nationals. So a great job by them down in Florida. Go Bulls, outstanding job. Congratulations to the Milford High School varsity hockey players, Sienna McNamara, she was Class M First Team Allstate, Emma Williams, she was Class M Second Team, and Lila Reagan, she was also First Team Allstate. They were also selected to play the Junior All-Star Game for the CIAC, and their team, the Carolina Blue, beat the Pink Team 3 to 1. So a great job by Coach Dawn and all of her group and the parents and the kids, just outstanding season. Looking forward to an even better season next year. A big thank you to, if you haven't had a chance to go to the Merwinsville Hotel, they're still having on the weekends their Holiday Christmas Show weekends, and it's just amazing to see all of the artisans that they have there, the model train display, the Dickens Village, just a great thing to see. I go there every year. Tammy and I went. It's wonderful. You can also see a great train display at the New Milford Lion Bear Library and at our Art Gallery 25 housing the railroad station. For those that are either owning businesses or running businesses, the Milford Chambers having their business scene December 18, 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM at the Husatonic River Brewing. And we also are still having need to calling out for Santa for seniors. And we do have some seniors that, due to inflationary pressures, cost of living and stuff, really won't have anything for Christmas. So at the Senior Center, you can pick up one here at Town Hall as well. You can get a little card, and it shows what a senior may want. Could be little things from like Cascade Dishwashing Soaps, to all sorts of different things. If you pick up one, you can purchase those things, bring it to the Senior Center, and you can make some senior have a much better holiday than they would not have. All of you here are invited to the mayor's holiday party. That's going to be this Wednesday, the 17th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And on some infrastructure, and I know we have Chuck and Jack here from Public Works, we'll be talking later on tonight, the San Ridge Road, San Road Bridge Replacement Project, contractors backfilling and compacting the Southern Bridge Approach. They're installing the rebarb and the approach slab, sealing concrete drainage pipes. They were doing that today. As we've talked about each time at Town Council, we're preparing to have that open for the wintertime, which makes it better for our plowing routes. We will then after winter close it again and complete the project. The Lanesville Fire Department, they continue the exterior work. They did do some cleanup of the debris around the perimeter of the site. They then did some grading on the embankment created by raising the new drive access, and they placed the flare end on the discharge pipe from the clarifier, put in some fabric stones for erosion control, and they're cutting and placing the track that will hold the steel studs on the exterior walls. And they did some welding as well. Also, we are beginning our budgetary process here. As you may or may not know, the budgetary year is different than a year that we have as residents, which would, for residents, it ends on the last day of December, and then the new year, January brings a new year. For municipal government, it's actually June 30 is the last day of the year, and July 1 is the beginning year. So we're beginning our budgetary process. I know the superintendent is working on her budget. We are beginning to have our department heads review what their requests are going to be. In January, the superintendent will work with the Board of Education to finalize their budget. We'll be working with our department heads here to finalize our requests here. The Board of Education will then review it and approve or make any recommended changes to the superintendent's budget. It will then come over to the town side. The town will complete our process. Then we'll have joint meetings, which happen in February, and it will be the Board of Finance and the Town Council together, and they will talk to the department heads, the Board of Education, and they could make any adjustments from the mayor's recommended budget. It then goes to the Board of Finance. They will then have their meeting. They will have a town meeting as well to here get public input also, and then they'll make any adjustments if they so choose. And that will go to you, the taxpayer, to approve or deny that budget. And stay tuned, we'll keep, continue to update you on the projects. Lastly, police statistics. We continue to drive accidents. That's our goal, especially fatalities down, starting with motor vehicle stops in the year 2023. And this time, at that year was 2,330. Last year was 3,244. This year is 4,417. So a great job by our men and women of the New Milford Police Department. We can't thank them enough. We received some grant funding from the Connecticut Department of Transportation as well to help us with those numbers. Those numbers related to lowering of our motor vehicle accidents. In the year 2023, we had 909, 138 were in parking lots. In 2024, that was reduced to 868, with 124 in parking lots. This year is 841, but a big huge uptick of 152 in parking lots. And in speaking with the chief, I mentioned this to the council several times before, the analysis that we are coming with is that why there are so many accidents in parking lots is that a lot of people now are using our town is a great place to shop, to dine. This is becoming more of an area of our neighbors, our smaller neighbors to come and support our town. That's why you see the higher numbers in the parking lots. But it is a big reduction in those roadway accidents, which is great. But as we all know, one is too many. In fatalities, in the year 2022, we had five. Very unfortunate. In 2023, we had five. In 2024, that was three. So far this year, and we're knocking on wood, 2025, we have one. And one is too many. And that can be established numerous ways. Some of the things that we're doing with extra enforcement, awareness, and also you, the public. We continue to say the data points that we collect, the number one cause of an accident here in New Milford is driving too close to someone in front of you. So if you can just keep, one of the things we can do self responsibly is make sure we have a proper distance between vehicles. The other one is distracted driving, and that's driving with your cell phone, driving, trying to look around, all those things. Those two major things, if we just were self responsible, those numbers would significantly drop. That we could do ourselves without doing anything else, just those two things. So we're going to continue to ask. Another thing too, as we talk about, is bus stop safety, our bus drivers and our kids, please, if the bus has red flashing lights and you're behind it, please stop. If you are going in the opposite direction of the bus, if there is a median between you and the bus and the lights are flashing, like at the high school, you can travel in the opposite direction. If there is no median, you must stop, like if you were at the United Methodist Church area there. Our police are going to continue to enforce that, and we just ask everybody to be responsible with that. A couple of things for events that are going to be happening in town. On the 13th, 6:30 PM, right here at the bandstand, we're having our annual Carol sing. And then right after that, we're having our Parade of Lights. And speaking with Chief Shawn, there's going to be lots and lots of vehicles. Be a great event. Come down and see some wonderful vehicles and partake in a great Carol sing that we have here on the bandstand. Thank you to the Commission on the Arts, the Theater Work Kids, they're going to be out there as well. On December 13, at 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM at the library is a holiday reading by Bill Hughes. Can do some great Christmas reading. On December 13, at 3:00 PM and 4:30 PM, Faith Church is having We Need a Little Christmas Play. Also on the 13th at 7:00 PM at the McCarthy Observatory is the Second Saturday Stars. If you haven't been, you know, we have an observatory here in New Milford, as well as a planetarium. And those volunteers do such an amazing job. You get to see the new telescope that we purchased in tandem with the Board of Education and donors, state of the art telescope, and you can see some great, great planets. And maybe, I'm going to ask them, maybe we could see Three Eye Atlas. That would be pretty cool. Next, on December 13, Katie, right at St. Francis Church in the Center Cemetery.
Cemetery.
Yep. Wreaths Across America, if you could talk a little bit about that.
I'd be happy to. Every year across the country, there's about 5,600 ceremonies done at, start at noon on the 13th, and what that does is the wreaths across America come from Maine. The gentleman who, for many years, placed all the wreaths on the Arlington Cemetery, he did it all on his own, you know, on his own dime, so to speak. And when he no longer was around, they decided to carry on the tradition and go and have people do it around the country. So what we do is there are, you can sponsor a wreath, buy one. We're very fortunate to have people in town, the Irish American Litchfield Club and some, of course, the Daughters of the American Revolution. And we lay wreaths on the graves at St. Francis, and this also happens up at Center Cemetery. And when you put the wreath on the grave, you say the name of the person because that's how you keep their persona alive. You know, when people die, sometimes they're never spoken of again. And this way, we say their name, and it's a really nice ceremony. It's not maudlin, and a lot of kids come to help put the wreaths out. So we welcome anybody to come, just as, and if you'd rather go up there, they do it. And it's quite nice. We have a lot of, we have a, just so you know, there's eight ceremonial wreaths. There are eight branches of the service. And I think you mentioned the flag you put up because the latest branch is the Space Force. So that's got its own wreath now.
Thank you, Katie. And what time should they be there?
Well, we, about a quarter to 12 would be the latest. At high noon, we do the little ceremony.
Excellent. It's a great ceremony. If you get a chance to participate, please do so to honor those men and women that paid the ultimate sacrifice for service here for our great country. Also, we have on December 13 and the 14th is Meet and Greet Santa. That's at Jesse's Ice Cream from 1:00 PM, starting on December 13, and noon to 4:00 PM on December 14. Polar Express, if you've seen that movie, they're playing that at Bank Street Theater. That's at 10:00 AM to noon on December 14. Also, on the 14th, the participating merchants here in the downtown are having a cookie and cocoa crawl. And Doc, it's going to be cold that day, right? So it'd be good for some cocoa and some cookies. So get down and enjoy that. Also, on the 14th, at the Village Farm, which is up in Galveston on Route 7, you can meet the brand new baby donkeys that are going to be there for Christmas time. On December 14, 4:00 PM at the First Congregational Church is the Christmas concert. On December 14, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Creative Escape Studio, which is at the Bleachery, is a holiday craft show at Create Escape. And from December 15 through the 28th, the New Milford Train Display, which is going to be at, we talked about before, Gallery 25 and the library. And on the 18th, the Village Center of the Arts is doing their Arts Night Out Air Supply Drive, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And that's all I have, Katie.
Sounds like we have a busy time coming till the end of the year. Okay, so moving on to item number six. Our first item 6A is a discussion on the Treebeard Best Project located at Aspetucker Ridge Road.
Thank you, Katie. And first and foremost, thank you to everyone that's come here tonight. We also have some that have emailed to be put into the record. And also, a big thank you to Chairman Bill Taylor and the Zoning Commission that had their informational meeting as well. And what I'm going to do is read some of the letters that we have here, Stephanie. First, from Senator Harding and Representative Buckby, who I had spoken to, and it says, Mayor Bass, we appreciate the efforts put toward, forward by the Zoning Commission. Town Council and the Office of the Mayor regarding the recently presented battery project. There's a significant amount of information to review and much to discern from the presentation. We especially value the thoughtful questions raised by both the community and the commission. It is certainly critical for us to hear from the community at large, and the elected municipal leaders must have a voice and be allowed to do what they were elected to do as well. As representatives and as neighbors, we share the same concerns expressed by our residents here in town. It is unfair for anyone to have to face any risk to their health or their property. Our constituents deserve clear answers to these critical questions, and we stand ready to support them along with our municipal leaders throughout this process. Collectively, we have engaged in conversations with multiple state agencies, including PURA and DEEP, as well as with Eversource, to better understand the potential impact of this project on our community. Each of these organizations is aware of the proposal Each of these organizations is aware of the proposal and is awaiting next steps once formal applications are submitted. As we understand, the next decision would rest with the Siding Council, once an application is submitted. We look forward to the answers expected at the January meeting and anticipate these responses will likely prompt additional questions. Both of us plan to be in attendance in support of our constituents at the January twelfth Town Council Meeting, in which this facility will be discussed. We also plan to continue to investigate this facility's placement and inquire with the appropriate agencies regarding its status. We are open to discussing this further with any of our constituents or local town officials. Stephen Harding, State Senator of the Thirtieth District, Bill Buckby, State Representative of the Sixty-seventh District. We also have from Colleen Ruse, One Beachside Drive. I support the request to empower the mayor to communicate with Wetland and Aquifer Protection to add the Flatron Energy Treebeard Best Project to the next regularly scheduled Wetlands and Aquifer Protection Meeting dated December eleventh, 2025, in an effort to start the public hearing process per twenty-two A thirty-two of the Connecticut statutes. We also have Dawn, who had already spoke here this evening. Christine Berice, I cannot intend in person tonight, but will be watching via live broadcast. Hello, members of the Town Council, I am writing to respectively request that the council empower the mayor to communicate with the Wetlands and Aquifer Protection Commission to add the Flatron Energy Treebeard BSS project, BESSS project, to the next regularly scheduled Wetlands and Aquifer Protection Meeting on December eleventh, 2025. This would allow the public hearing process to begin in accordance with Section two A thirty-two of the Connecticut General Statutes. I am deeply concerned about the limited amount of time residents have had to learn about the proposed project, especially given its location in an R forty residential zone containing wetlands, the West Aspetuck River, designated flood zone. In addition to these environmental concerns, I previously shared with Mayor Pete, on December fifth, a number of safety issues regarding the health risks of our residents and potential dangers faced by our volunteer firefighters should an emergency occur at this facility. My hope is that the Town Council will support greater public involvement and ensure that the residents have the opportunity to fully understand and discuss the potential impacts this product could have, this project could have in our community. We all care deeply about preserving the well-being of our town and continuing to cherish the place we are proud to call home. Thank you for your consideration. Paige Di Filippo, Dear Mayor Bass and the New Milford Town Council, my name is Paige Di Filippo, and I am writing to express my strong and unequivocal opposition to Treebeard BESSS Project Proposal. I've been heavily involved in the riding program at Quiet Rain Farm on Wells Road since their opening in 2017. I am now lucky enough to share this passion with my two-year-old daughter and her pony Chipotle, who currently resides at Quiet Rain Farm. This proposed project would directly affect the well-being of every animal who lives on this picturesque family farm, as well as the people who love them. Catherine and Tim Ru have poured their hearts and souls into this beautiful property and program. Not too long ago, Mayor Bass traveled to the farm, I did, it's a great farm, and to highlight the program, it took great pride in having this business in New Milford. Catherine has countless community programs currently in place at the barn. I personally know how hard she has worked to cultivate a barn community that is not just affluent families to have access to, a feat that is nearly impossible to do in the horse world. Would be ashamed to jeopardize this working farm and family business owner over the proposed lithium plant. This project proposal is not a safe or logistical location. It is not hypothetical, is instead a predictable risk with known environmental contamination that would greatly affect a high populated area. I urge you to put your current residents and businesses before Treebeard BESS. I knowingly speak for all of us who love Quiet Rain Farm and the animals who live here. Please find an alternative location for this project. I ask that the safety, health, and the future of the two-legged and four-legged residents alike are put ahead of an incompatible industrial project. And then we have another one from Lori Monaco, the West Meeting House Road. I'm a resident of New Milford for almost twenty-eight years and live two point five miles north of proposed battery storage facility site. I'm writing this email to express my opposition to the Flatron Treebeard Proposal and Plans for a BESS on Aspetuck Ridge Road. Upon researching other BESS facilities across the nation, I believe New Milford, Connecticut is not the place for one, for the following reasons. It's proposed in an R forty residential zone. It's proposed on land containing an aquifer near wetlands within a flood zone and along the West Aspetuck River. In the event of a fire, a thermal event, the contaminated runoff would pollute our soil and river for years. Battery fires release toxic metals and chemicals into the air, which is potentially dangerous for humans, wildlife, and the surrounding ecosystem. These fires have been documented to burn for days, and the output of metallic particles can travel long distances and lodge deeply into lungs. Exposure to toxins of this sort can cause irrevocable health damage. The safety concerns for our community are numerous. First, our volunteer fire department is not equipped to handle large-scale battery fires. Fires of this type require specialized and continuous training, equipment, which is a huge undertaking for volunteer fire department personnel. Secondly, the residents who live on Aspetuck Ridge Road would be subjected to a constant battery humming, bright nighttime lighting, and an ugly structure of concrete and barbed-wire fencing. More importantly, the fear of a battery fire so close to their homes, all of the fallout of toxicity in the air, soil, and water. On Wednesday, December third, Flatron Representatives presented revealing many disturbing components, including the lack of human monitoring of the battery facility, and inadequate up-to-one-hour response time to an emergency, no worthwhile benefits to the community, and evasiveness on who would be guaranteeing the soundness of this battery facility in the future. Flatron is a developer and promoter and proposal for short term only. This is not reassuring for the town of New Milford. Let's see, Paula Walton, Dear New Milford Town Council Members, as a thirty-five-year resident of New Milford and property owner, I am writing to you regarding my concerns about the Flatron Energy Treebeard BSS LLC project that was recently made public to the citizens of New Milford, is my understanding that is on the agenda for tonight's Town Council meeting. I strongly support the request to empower the mayor to communicate with Wetland and Aquifer Protection to add the Flatron Energy Treebeard BSS project to the next regularly scheduled Wetlands and Aquifer Protection Meeting dated eleven, December eleventh, 2025, in effort to start public hearing process per twenty-two A thirty-two of the Connecticut General Statutes. I think it is vitally important to protect our aquifer, wetlands, and rivers. This proposed facility would endanger the water supply of New Milford, would add considerably to the pollution and existing brownfield challenges that the town is already facing. Not only that, but in close proximity to homes, playing fields at Hallenmark's Park in Youngs Field, the Youngs Field Playground and Skate Park, and the Swim and Tennis Club, which are all frequented by residents from the entire town, would seem to be a threat to the proposed riverfront development as well. In the event of a toxic gases, heavy metal fragments would pose additional threats to humans and wildlife. Dear Members of the Town Council, this is from Dawn. Did we already do Dawn?
Yes.
Go, sorry. And here's Dawn's for the record as well. Did I already print that one out?
Yeah, I got it.
And that's all that I have as far as letters. I do have one other one, and this is from a group, and this is the Clean Water Coalition. And this was a letter directed to the Inland Wetlands Commission, the Town Council Members, and to myself. We are writing as residents and taxpayers of New Milford to urgently request that Wetlands Commission hold a public hearing per twenty-two A thirty-two of the Connecticut General Statutes on a proposed battery energy storage system, BESS project currently before you. We are also requesting this topic be added to the agenda of the upcoming Town Hall Meetings, beginning with the twelve-eight session, so that all residents can be fully updated on Flatron's proposal. We want to ensure that all residents have ample opportunity to learn about the proposed project, voice their concerns in a fair, accessible, transparent way. It is also important for Chairman Jim Furlough and entire Inland Wetlands Commission, and I'm going to stop and preface it, is Jim Furlough is not the chairman, he is the Inland Wetlands Officer. Kathy Sutherland is the Inland Wetlands Chairperson. To join these discussions and hear directly from the community as their participation will support a more informed, accountable, and responsive review process. Many residents across the town are organizing, sharing information, and expressing significant concerns about the environmental issues surrounding this application. This is a significant project that has the ability to violate the public trust in air, water, and soil. A public hearing is necessary to ensure these concerns are formally heard and thoroughly evaluated. We are also formally requesting one or more of us, or designative representatives, be granted intervenor status at an official proceedings related to this application. This will ensure that the community has full participatory rights, the ability to question the applicant, present expert testimony, and safeguard the public interest throughout the review process. There are major environmental land use concerns with this project. Under the Inland Wetlands Water Courses Act, a hearing is warranted when a proposal may significantly impact wetlands, water courses, or when a public interest clearly requires it. First, the site at Two Timothy Lane is a R forty industrial zone, directly adjacent to homes and community resources. The parcel consists of approximately a hundred acres, and among wetlands, only about ten acres potentially buildable without disturbance. Second, the property lies within a designated aquifer protection area that supplies public drinking water. The proximity of the Husutonic River and its interconnected water sources, namely the West Aspetuck, a Class A watershed, raises concerns about contaminated runoff, stormwater behavior, and downstream effects. Third, serious questions remain about water withdrawal, cooling operations, emergency fire fighting runoff, and groundwater contamination during failure of thermal runaway events. The application lacks clear disclosure about hazardous materials, including battery chemistry, coolant, fire suppressors, and PCBs. Given the significant fire hazard associated with large-scale battery storage facilities, and the fact that New Milford relies on volunteer firefighters, we're not equipped for long-duration lithium ion battery fires. It is critical that this issue be publicly reviewed and understood by both officials and residents alike. Importantly, Flatron provided deeply concerning information regarding noise impact. They admitted they have no actual data on the noise level from the proposed facility on the specific site. Despite this, they estimated neighbors will hear approximately sixty decibels at one hundred feet away. This is a volume of a constantly running generator or industrial hum. A continuous sound at this level will severely disrupt wildlife habitats, migratory patterns, nesting areas, and proposed real health risks, including hypertension and cardiac stress over prolonged exposure. Pressing this project location appears to fall within the National Diversity Database, including the potential presence of state-listed endangered, threatened, or special concern species on, near the site. Construction of an industrial energy storage facility in a NDDB zone poses a high risk of habitat disruption, noise disturbance, lighting interference, and possible contamination to species already recognized as vulnerable. Any altercation of wetlands hydrology, introduction of hazardous materials, or long-term industrial noise at the estimated sixty-foot decibel level would significantly impair wildlife behavior, breeding cycles, ecosystem stability. For this reason alone, a public hearing is essential to thoroughly evaluate biodiversity impacts and ensure compliance with state conservation projects. In a quiet residential zone, surrounded by wetlands, this level of industrial noise pollution is entirely inappropriate and impossible to mitigate. These concerns alone justify a public hearing, but there are also concerns when this public was notified. First time the residents were informed of this project was at the December third Town Hall Meeting. This meeting immediately occurred after the holiday weekend and was moved from its usual Tuesday slot to Wednesday, reducing attendance. I might add, the reason why was we were called from residents because there was a potential snow ice event. So the residents asked if we could move it to a Wednesday for safe travel. I spoke with the Chairman of Zoning Commission, and he agreed, thus we had moved this meeting to December third. At that meeting, Flatron admitted they have no completed energy storage facilities and no fully built project of this type at any location. They also, they also stated they filed their application in mid-October and are only required to reach the public for sixty days. By the time we were informed on December third, over half of that required public notice period had already passed, depriving the community of the meaningful time for review and due diligence. This rushed timeline, combined with incomplete disclosures and a virus sensitivity of the site, creates a sensitivity where the public has not been given a fair, timely, or informed opportunity to participate. Given the scale of the potential environmental impacts, the risk to our wetlands and aquifer, the inexperience of the developer, the unresolved hazards, the health effects of the continuous industrial noise in the residential area, and the substantial public concern already emerging, it is imperative that the commission schedule a public hearing. Lastly, because Mayor Bass has confirmed that PURA and the Connecticut Siding Council are the agencies that will ultimately make the decision on the project, we respectfully request that the Inland Wetlands Commission firmly notify and invite PURA, DEEP, and the Siding Council to observe or provide comment at the public hearings so that reviewing bodies are fairly aware of the significant environmental concerns raised by residents. A hearing will ensure transparency, give residents an opportunity to voice their concerns, require the applicant to address these significant issues on the record. Thank you for your attention and commitment to the project to protect New Milford's natural resources. Respectfully submitted on behalf of the concerned New Milford residents. Myself, Jim Furlough, and the Town Council were all CC'd on this letter. Kind of, I guess, housekeeping, so to speak. I had some residents over the weekend ask me, is the town, does the town decide this? Do we decide whether there could be a plant here or not? We do not. We can be given the chance to give comment. The Siding Council is the one that has the ability, with PURA, to decide whether or not this facility, or any facility, can be built in New Milford. And what is the council's jurisdiction? The council has jurisdiction over the citing of energy telecommunications and hazardous waste facilities, including the following. Electric transmission lines of a design capacity of sixty-nine kilovolts or more. Fuel transmission lines of a design capacity of more than two hundred pounds per square inch gager, design capacity of more than twenty percent of its specified minimum yield strength. Electric generation or storage facilities use any fuel, but not including: A, an emergency generating device; B, a facility owned or operated by a private power producer that is determined by the council to be for the producer's own use and has generating capacity, and this is where it's different, of one megawatt or less. Because this project is one point nine, that's the Siding Council, and that is PURA. Also, it's talked about here is you have public comment that's allowed within a sixty-day window. For those that were not here at the meeting that was done by zoning, and again, a big thank you to Chairman Taylor and all the zoning committee members, and those that were in the audience here tonight and also there. The company stated that they are going to have more hearings, it's not just the sixty days. They haven't even filed an application yet. They're talking about filing an application in February. So we don't even know what the design of this thing is. As Tim had talked about before, there's all this generality to it. We had invited them, as Chairman Taylor had asked, and our residents asked for lots of great questions, they didn't have the answers to those. So they are working on those answers to give back to the Zoning Commission and to this Town Council and to you, the public. I invited them to the January meeting so there will be plenty of time for the zoning commission, you, the public, everybody, and for them to get us those answers to the questions that we have. There's been a call for, Randy, I'll defer to you just a moment. There's been a call for Inland Wetlands to have a meeting based on Flat Run. Could you opine as to an Inland Wetlands meeting?
There's no application pending? Is there an application pending before the Inland Wetlands Commission?
No. Can you talk a little louder so that everyone can, I'm sorry, Randy?
Well, he doesn't have a microphone.
No, it's gonna, it's gonna backfeed if we go over that.
I'll repeat. Unless there's an application pending before them, or there's a violation, then they could call somebody in. But on something like this, they just don't have jurisdiction. I mean, the law's clear. Somebody cited twenty-two A dash twenty-two, well, that's great. But that also has a limitation as to the Wetlands Commission's obligations and roles. Secondly, the Wetlands Commission is an arm of the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Well, you know that. That's actually, they're actually delegated that authority to the state. The state, however, has plenary authority over something like this. I don't know where the idea came to take it to Inland Wetlands because there's nothing pending before Inland Wetlands.
And the body that reviews this type is not the local Inland Wetlands? It is the Department of Environmental Protection.
The Commissioner.
They would be approving or denying an application for wetlands on this body because it is a one point nine megawatt storage facility. And thank you, Randy, for that. Also, why did, why did it was brought up by someone from the public? Why New Milford? Why, and we're gonna see more of these, why? Because the State of Connecticut Public Utilities Regulation Authority, part of it is docket number two four zero eight oh five, requires that we, as a society here in the State of Connecticut, buy renewable energy. That we buy battery storage, that we buy all this stuff. This is a mandate. As you can see, that's why some of our prices are the highest in the country. I think we're the second highest in the whole United States. So the proximity to the grid that we have here, the proximity to the dam that's hydroelectricity, that charges electricity, we are going to see entities come and try and do that. Now, some people are gonna have you believe, and it's all politics. Some people are gonna have you believe, oh, you just found out about this. Oh, you should've had a meeting the next day. There are companies that come here all the time, and they ask questions, they deliberate, they do their due diligence. This is a private transaction between a landowner and a company. So they can come in and ask us all sorts of questions. We didn't find out about their seriousness about it, putting an option on it, until October. Now, once we found out about October, we wanna create a meeting. That takes some time. I don't know if a lot of you go down to the zoning meeting and see how packed they are down there with zoning. It's to create a time where we have a legitimate opportunity to create an informational meeting, of which zoning did. The entity, Flat Run, stated, and watch the video if you haven't seen it, stated they will absolutely go beyond this sixty-day volunteer window. They will address the public, they will address us. All of us have concerns. I have a ton of concerns myself on this project. But there's other ample opportunities for us to talk to them and get the information that we need. So the next meeting will be in the January meeting. I've also asked Randy, how can we do it where we can have all boards and commissions that kind of would have an input on it? Because as Chairman Taylor had suggested, that we all, in one voice, present our comments, present our strategy to the Siding Council as one. So I'd asked Randy, and he said this would be a good idea, is at our January meeting. We're gonna ask, I'm hoping the school, Dr. Parlato, if you're watching it, or Board of Ed members, I'm gonna ask for the high school. And we're gonna have, within the agenda items, we're gonna have a, what they call a workshop with this, where they will present. And the reason being is, now, all of these bodies, Inland Wetlands Commission members, if they wanna come, Town Council members, and also, who else, zoning members, will be there. They can take notes, they can ask questions, as well as you, the public, and we're not violating any FOI, and we're not violating any jurisdictional things that could be within some of the zoning and inland wetland statutes. So that's another opportunity for us all to talk and for us all to partake. As far as their application, and again, please, watch the video if you haven't seen it before. They have not filed an application. In the ending comments that the gentleman from Flatiron talked about, they would be looking at sometime in February. And if that's the case, in the Siding Council, and you can look this up on the website yourself, you can go to the Siding Council, and I'm gonna read from there real quick, is, how does the process work once they get it to Siding Council? What happens? What happens? "The council meeting the Siding Council is required by law to hold a public hearing within thirty-two one fifty, to one hundred and fifty days after an application for a certificate of environmental compatibility and public need is submitted. A public hearing notice must be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the vicinity of the proposed facility site, in ten-point, bold-faced font, as well as posted with the Secretary of State's office." "A council's public hearing process is typically structured in three parts. The first part is they go and they do a field review. That's usually held at two PM for the council. Participants and the public can observe the proposed site. It may include a balloon float to simulate the height of the thing. The afternoon is what they call an evidentiary session, usually held at three PM at the venue in the host municipality, when the applicant formally presents and verifies its exhibits and is subject to cross-examination and exhibits by the council." Now, here is where they would come if they're going to apply, with their full data point, their full plans, engineers, designs. They're gonna come with all of that to this meeting because the Siding Council is the one that has the authority and the jurisdiction. Then, in the evening, they're gonna have public comments section. This is held after six-thirty PM at the venue in the host municipality for the convenience of the public to make oral, limited-appearance statements of concern about the proposed project that are subject to cross-examination by the council, applicant or parties, and interveners. Parties and interveners may not also participate in public comment session as they are active participants in evidentiary session that includes the right to submit written testimony and cross-examine the applicant. And the reason why I bring that up tonight, why it's important for us, the public, to understand really the whole process and who the decision-makers are, is I, like everyone else, I know, me personally, I am no means an environmental engineer, nor am I an environmental scientist. But I do know one thing, we need to have people that represent us do that due diligence for us. And Chairman Taylor had asked Flat Run, and watch the video yourself, for those that were here, if they would pay for those studies, and they said that they would, which is going to be extremely important. Because if we want to comment to the Siding Council, we have to comment to the Siding Council with facts, with data points, with history, not just Google chatting, Google Chat GPT, not looking up Googling and seeing the things. We have to have very thorough facts, very thorough representation to make sure that our point is heard loud and clear, and that the Siding Council sees that we have been very thorough in our investigation and show that our concerns for the safety of our health and our welfare of our residents. Today, I spoke to a Mr. Quinn, who is actually an environmental scientist. He actually was with the town when it came right, Randy, to Candlewood Solar. I'm going to be speaking with him tomorrow about some of the animals that we talked about that are on this property. Also, we're gonna get confirmation from Flatiron to start the process of having the studies done for us here in town, and then, as well as to make sure they come to our meeting in January. And I pose this by, we wanna make sure when we do comment as a municipality, that we comment together on our boards and commissions, and that we don't go without scientific information. Because when we do go to the Siding Council, they will come and they will say, well, how did you reach your conclusion? How did you do that? What data points did you use? How did you do that? And we wanna make sure, as a municipality, that we have all those data points, and they're backed up by science, they're backed up by the professionals. So it's very important, we're all concerned, I know we all are. I know I'm concerned like everyone else. The presentation that was given concerns lots of people. And I think we need to be patient, we need to be calculated, and we need to really, in a business-minded sense, bring those things to, when they decide if they do, to an application process to have it all done, and for everyone to get as much information as they can. We're gonna continue to hold these meetings. They also specified on the video that they would themselves be hosting an open house the first week in January to get your input as well. And that's way outside of the sixty-day window. And they stated they were gonna continue to have an open dialogue with the town. And if it's okay with the Town Council, well, first I'll ask the council. Any questions so far from the council? We've done a lot of stuff.
First of all, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that very informative explanation of the process. I know I learned a lot from that, and I appreciate that. I listened to everything at the Zoning Commission hearing, and I listened to everything everyone said, and I read a lot of emails and Facebook posts. I personally wanna be the first to testify that I am in opposition to this. I'm going to attend everything, but I do not expect them to teach me that it's not in a residential area, that it's not over an aquifer, that it's not gonna be a burden to our volunteer fire department, et cetera, et cetera. I don't wanna be redundant. I do wanna ask, though, have we considered hiring a third-party engineering firm to do their own research that maybe Flatiron would pay for?
I'm asking? At the meeting, I think you, Hillary, were there, as well as Chairman Taylor, had asked them if they would pay for third-party, and they said they would. So yes. And that'll be done through zoning. Yeah, we would hire one anyway, but the good news is that's very expensive.
And you already mentioned that they said they paid for it.
They said they would do it, which is good news.
I appreciate that very much. And my second question is, I don't know if anyone's familiar, but I just learned today that in Torrington, there is one of these B E S S facilities. And in that case, they put it over like the town dump, where it wasn't over an aquifer, and it actually was a great opportunity for that town with very little resistance because it was over the dump, as opposed to the place where this is located. Has anyone engaged in any conversation with Flatiron about considering a different location that might not be as risky?
I would think that would be something that could be approached to them during one of these informational meetings that we do have. I know that on their own, they decided to pick this parcel, for whatever reason that they did. But absolutely, I think they're probably watching this as well, and will be here for the next meeting. And, you know, maybe they would decide after seeing all of this, that maybe it may be a good choice for them to look at another location, whether here in New Milford or somewhere else.
You know, it's a privately-owned piece of property. So what brought them to that could have been outreach from the owner of the property. You know, it's not anything that we would know about. And again, it's a private thing, so a lot of things could have been done and said that we'll never know about. You know, if you were trying to sell your property, you might engage with a lot of people and go for the best price. And I'm imagining that probably.
And a lot of these companies, I've been doing some research myself, they go to Google Earth, Google Map, and they go to the transmission lines, and they just follow it all the way. And they see if there's any property for sale along that line. Then they go and talk to the property owner. So I don't know if that's their case for them, but that's what I've read, that's what some of them do do. Does anybody? Tom, and then Sal. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanna thank everybody that came out tonight.
Absolutely.
And expressed yourself. I especially wanna thank somebody who just left Julie Valley, who always weaves her comments into some wonderful poetry. It's ironic to me that as the first night of the new council, after I've been sitting in this room for sixteen years, another monstrosity has been proposed. We started with the former mayor's panda debacle, where if you went on the other side, Cricket Valley, and saw it was built over there, you would be extremely happy that we fought that off as vehemently as we did. Candlewood Solar, but it doesn't surprise me that this continues. We are, as the mayor said, and as you all recognize, we are right on the middle of a transmission line. You know, as it was called CLNP, or Northeast Utilities, or whoever we remember them as now, as they are EverSource. This lake was the driver of this valley when it was flooded and created hydroelectric. It's what transformed this from a quiet rural agricultural community into the community we have today. And what the mayor just said is they do, and I know a lot of these types of guys. I'm in the energy efficiency business in New York. This is not the site that I work with, but I've seen these proposals before. They are shotgunning these everywhere. Wherever they find a transmission line that's close enough to a highway, or to a town, or where they can get the capacity, they're gonna propose it. And after watching them, I've never seen less experienced people give a proposal on such a massive project in all the years I've been doing this. I was shocked. I knew in the first five minutes that these guys didn't really know what they were talking about. And I would assume everybody at this table, if I was to say, are you in favor or against this, everybody in this room would have their hands up. I really wanted to say at the very beginning, we probably would've been out of here forty-five minutes ago.
We're gonna put our hands up anyway, so you know.
Just so that.
Is it gonna count now?
Some folks who haven't been here that long, I mean, this is, you know, I've been in this room a long time, the mayor, and Katie, and many others, we've seen this, you know. There are people coming to assault this town, you know, every other year with some project that they think is gonna be wonderful for us. It never really pans out to be wonderful for us, it's only wonderful for them. You know, if we owned this project, if we were on our own utility, and we did this on our own, on our own dime, that would go behind the meter, meaning behind the meter of CLNP or EverSource, as we know them, where the power came to us, there would be a different conversation going on. But obviously, not next to houses, not next to a fantastic trout stream if you bring a fish back there, which, you know, some of us used to sneak in on opening day and catch a few trout and send them back their way. This is right in the middle of town. You know, it's as ludicrous as panda, it's as ludicrous as samara. It's as crazy as cutting a mountainside full of trees down to put up a bunch of soap battles. It's ludicrous, it's ludicrous. And I want everybody here who is upset, and I know a lot of people in town are, to be confident that we are gonna scream loud. The zoning board will scream loud, the people in town will scream loud. We've fought people off before like this, and we're gonna do it again. We're not gonna let something like this come in and destroy the town. It's just not gonna happen. happen.
I, I would like to just. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm gonna let, let them go. I'll go after them.
I, I just want to follow up on that, uh, Tom. I agree with everything that you just said. Um, just as a personal anecdote, I was out walking my dog last night. I live off of Aspatuck Bridge and I got cornered by several people who were coming out grabbing their mail, grab- grabbing their garbage cans. I had all my signs out for elections and these are people that I've grown up around my entire life. And everyone said, what do you think about this? How can we let this go through? It's, everyone was opposed to it. Every single person I've talked to in my neighborhood, up and down Aspatuck Bridge, is opposed to this. And they're saying, it's going to be absolutely destructive to the community. And it was brought up, and I know Ari, you and I talked about this the other night. It's, you know, this company, they don't have the expertise. They don't have the background for it. Maybe they could do a good job with it, but how can we know that? And everyone is so concerned about it. So again, I ju- I wanted to just say that everyone I've talked to that lives in the immediate vers- the immediate vicinity is very concerned. They do not want this to go through.
Thank you.
Mary Jane?
Uh, yeah, so I, I have a question. In, in reading through their documents, um, and maybe I got this wrong and I don't have it in front of me right this second, but, um, there's a place in there where it says that town council would be asked to issue a certificate of environmental compatibility in public meetings.
Wh- where's you get that from?
Mary Jane, it's a reading. Where'd that come from? That, the town council has no jurisdiction over that.
Well, stay, just, I read it. So I'll have to go back and look at it again. I don't have it in front of me right now, but.
Siding council.
Yeah, maybe it was the siding council.
Siding council says we don't like it. How much, you know, how much is that gonna bear on, um?
Well, if that's, if that's from the siding council, then that means something. And the town council would have some power. If they were asked to act, we'd ask them to do that.
Pure.
No, it said something about the town council.
Go, go and check, Mary Jane.
So I don't know.
The, um, the project that we're facing right now, it's no coincidence. Why it's not coincidence? Because of the H B eight thousand two that was passed. The law is so vague and basically it's allowing to go for the state. Well, they basically dismantled our zoning in New Milford. So if you all think we have a zoning, we don't. Because of the H B eight, eight thousand and two. So what happens right now, and this is the fourth phase of the project, it's well, very well publicized. So it's not true that some of the people didn't know anything. They didn't go to the Connecticut, uh, C T dot gov website. It's very well publicized. This is the fourth phase. Now they're pushing this especially because H B eight thousand two was, was passed, which says zoning is mine, which is Hartford. So now they can go to the Hartford and say, because of X, Y, Z, because they so loosely, I don't know, maybe we have to produce affordable electricity to everybody else except for those that pay for the electricity. Like what do you have a public thing on your, on your bill, right? So that's what it is. This, that part, part is bigger part of something called TOD, which is, uh, you can, you can Google this or research this, uh, compile this. It's transit oriented development. The transit, uh, oriented development with some idea with some leftist lunatics, probably someone in Manhattan in the penthouse, and they're saying, let's make Connecticut great again. And they say, because people are so dispersed in Connecticut, we're gonna build all the, that, that goes with H B eight thousand two and affordable this and affordable that. And obviously they go along the, the, um, the transit line, which is the railroad in, in our case. That's why they pushing right now to build all the sixteen, twelve, fourteen, whatever unit houses and to transfer everything, they need to have a railroad. So in our case, in New Milford, our truck goes along the river and they'll find any spot they can to actually get that piece of land, build sixteen, fourteen, forty, whatever the skyline, uh, you know, whatever the buildings they want to build along with whatever else they wanna push as a part of the TOD, which is the transit oriented development. So in our, in our words, it's basically to disorganize the suburbs and organize them in a well, in a way that they think is gonna work. Maybe it's gonna work, maybe it's not gonna work. To our town, and I'm definitely against this nonsense battery bullshit that they, that they proposed, in our case is, is the liability. Because the company comes here and says, okay, we're gonna put this thing, it's gonna be fantastic for another five years. But what if we have a thunderstorm and it hits the battery? And we have a spill? Who's gonna, who's gonna pay for this? Nobody says that. Who's gonna pay for replacement? Those things have lifespan. I don't maybe have to replace them after five or ten years. Probably you have to. Who's gonna do this? Is it gonna be the town? But they do need the railroad to actually transport those things from place to place along with this whole TOD project that they have in mind. That's pretty much what it is. So we're in, in our words, we're being socially engineered. And they're telling us that this is the best thing after the sliced bread. Again, the whole thing, if you look at the, uh, the department, uh, if you, if you look at the C T golf, they started to the pilots, this is the fourth phase, the last phase. And they were going slowly sneaky and all that stuff because Hartford is running not by the Republicans, obviously. And now they're pushing because of H B eight thousand and two. They have full jurisdiction to come up with some nonsense and get the zoning out of the way, whatever they want to do. That's why it's being pushed on our throats. That's pretty much, that's pretty much the case.
Well, I just, first thing I wanna say is, um, I think, uh, the majority of people in this town and around this town would not be for this. But there is someone who is. And that's the man that owns the property. So keep that in mind. Uh, one of the things that will happen if this goes two steps in the wrong way, and those of you who've lived here long enough will remember, that we did not have to deal with what Sempra wanted to do, what Panda wanted to do, the Vespera, uh, someone said, putting Sherman on the top of Candlewood Mountain, then the solar project. All those things were, they didn't happen. Why? Because the town came out as won. And I, I understand that, you know, a lot of people were upset because they didn't know this or thought that this had happened or whatever. But now we're, we're getting more information out to everybody. And if this comes to the point of really needing to rally, I'm talking about, we got twenty-eight some thousand people here, maybe not the babies, but that's what it took to show those companies who were pretty big. We never let up, never let up. You all remember if you were here. And that is what we have to think about. Whether we agree on a dot on the I or the cross on the T at the same place, that has to stop. When, if, and I hope it doesn't get that far. I hope they just realize that we are not to be fooled with. But please keep that in mind and when they have this, I, I think it's a great idea to have all of the departments together at the high school and everybody can listen. And that way, everybody knows what everybody should know or wants to know. And I think that we just need to coalesce. There's a lot of things we don't have to agree on, but that's not the end of the world. But this is something everybody, man, woman, child, dogs, parrots, whatever. This is gonna be our mantra, should this get to that point. So please talk about it with your neighbors and your friends and your family and realize that we will all hold hands in pushing these people out. That's what we have to do.
This is the first meeting and we're all in agreements across. What our politics are, we all agree on this.
Going back to what you said, I think we should all show a, show of hands for the people that are watching us and the people that are from this company. But they understand that this town council and the public that's here is against this program. And let's do a show of hands.
It doesn't have to be a formal vote. It's just.
We cannot do anything, but we can raise a vote.
We are against.
Against.
So bring it on.
Yeah, make a picture, uh, Hartford, whatever it is.
Bring it on.
Yeah, let's do the selfie.
We all agree. It was a nice night.
And that takes the, our public that is out there wondering whether the council is working for them or not. They understand by watching this that we are in fact backing them. We are, do not want this project here in New Milford.
Next meeting will be, uh, we're coming to our next town council, uh, January twelfth.
And we'll be, uh, letting you know, hopefully it's at the high school. Uh, I'll be talking to the superintendent tomorrow. So we'll let everybody know.
Great.
Or, or Serenobel. We could after.
Yeah, after.
Yep.
Yep. Okay, we need.
Next is the town council rules, rules and procedures.
Right.
And this was, uh, brought up. We talked a little bit at the last meeting about our rules and procedures. And Ari talked a little bit about, uh, town, a town councilman's right to put things on the agenda. I'd ask Randy to take a look at, uh, not only our, um, charter, but then that how that applies to our rules and procedures. So Randy, I'll, I'll, uh.
Charter control. Charter says that any member, any member of the town council can have something placed on the agenda. Doesn't look, doesn't what the rules control is the timing. Because you said, the way the, the rules are written, you would have to be placed on the agenda, but not at any specific time. That would be a determination, determination of the rest of the thing. So yes, absolutely. Any member can have something placed on the agenda.
And if, and that would be.
The mayor and the timeline to put it on the agenda, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but just to clarify, it would have to go on the agenda for the next meeting, right? Just. So it could be like five years from now? I mean. Right. So what would be reasonable then?
Well, reasonable, what the council would be determined to do. In other words, what it says in the rules is that the member, uh, the charter, the member can place it on the, on the agenda. But it has to be timing, if it is based upon the rules. That's what it says.
I'd like to ask you to please write a formal legal opinion on this and, or, uh, because, um, I mean, it's really clear that it should go on the agenda. If it could be postponed indefinitely, then, then that would violate the intention of the rule. No, but that, but the charter is really clear. It says said agenda shall, shall, you know, that's a definitive statement. Shall contain all items submitted to the mayor by any member of the town council. Uh, it, it doesn't say, it doesn't revoke that. I, I mean.
How, how are you interpreting?
We're not asking you to represent, read the sentence. Read the sentence.
It says, or by the mayor within the time limits prescribed by the rules and procedure adopted by the town council. But that doesn't mean that it could be removed or indefinitely postponed.
Mary, you're having asked to have anything like that. You asked to have something put on the agenda, which I think it was. But you're assuming that it's gonna not happen.
Yeah, it's gonna be declined.
From those that are here, I realize we have a couple of new people. And, but to assume that it's gonna be five years. No, it bases, it's based on A, first of all, what we have going on in the agenda, because we have a certain timeframe where we are allowed to call the end and go home. And it, I guess, I don't know, maybe it's whether it's, uh, I don't know. We've never reviewed anybody.
I'm not assuming anything. Actually, I'm just getting my bearings. I'm new to this and I'm learning the rules and procedures. And, and, and there's no assumptions.
So read, so read first, before you learn.
Generally, it's not the vice chair, all the council. It gets on the agenda to determine, to determine by the rest of it, what else has to be done. The other thing you could do is that if you really want something on, is that you can make a motion to add it to the agenda at any meeting.
Understood, which is how this came up. Because I was told that if I wanted to bring something forth for discussion, because rule two does not mention anything about the agenda. It really just talks about bringing something forth for discussion. It says to act upon it. That would be the actual vote on something. Then I would need a super majority of two thirds of those present to actually get that through. But to bring it up for discussion, any town council member by rule two of the rules and procedures should have the right to bring it up at any time.
But it doesn't say that.
It does say that. That's exactly what it says.
I, I would, I would, I would, uh, I would appeal to your fellow town council.
I would ask you for a formal legal opinion on the subject.
I have to get that authority from Vice Chair.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we, um, empower the mayor to ask the, uh, town attorney to, uh, provide a legal opinion on.
I, I pulled a question.
First of all, get, get, just get used to it. You can't just say these things in the middle. You gotta, just sit back a little bit and listen and see. I appreciate that you have these questions. I think it's great that you do and you wanna know. And that's why we have an attorney here. But as Randy said, the first thing you asked, it's about press of the business.
Well, I'm making the motion. You can vote it down if you want to.
Yeah, you, the, the way that works, you first say you wanna amend the rules to add something, then we vote on that. You can't just say it.
Okay.
All right.
I would like to amend the rules to add something. I would like to amend the agenda.
Is there, is there, is there, Dana, is there a second to this?
For what though?
To add something to the agenda.
To, the something would be to empower the mayor to ask the town attorney to provide a formal legal written opinion on the rights of a town council member to bring something forth for discussion at a meeting and also to submit something to the agenda and have it heard in a timely manner.
Isn't the, our charter, which was developed with attorneys and is written by them, you can read that. I don't know what he would say that is different. But if you want to do that, uh, you, we could vote on it, I guess.
Well, you don't have to vote.
I mean, I don't.
The mayor has plenty of authority to order the town council, town attorney to issue an opinion. You don't be, you don't be the town.
That's what Ari would like. So there you go.
I think, uh, I'd like to hear what our council has to say, number one. And number two, just for the many years I've been on here and now as mayor, uh, as you can see by the Friday agendas we rush to put out because we get different things, you'll see a request to ask something to the agenda today. So the forefathers of our town put that, uh, procedure in because if not, we have nine members asking to have things on the agenda nine times, eighteen times within the timeframe as we're trying to do regular business.
That's right.
So that's why they made that provision.
Excuse me. Excuse me. We have, we, we have a motion that was made. So I just wanna get it rid, get rid of it or do something with it?
All right, well, we have one mo- we have, I don't think anybody's. Nobody's seconded it.
Okay, so no one's.
I would just like to add something. I, I just feel that you are a person that if we assume, you, you're very prepared. You look very prepared. You look very educated. You are creating a problem that doesn't exist. So I think you're just sit there and just, let's go about our business. And when the time comes, then you can, uh, approach the council and.
My fear is that it would be too late at that point.
Oh, yeah?
And I just wanna be prepared.
This is your first real meeting. Why does it make sense that you're gonna be prohibited?
I have heard from people that it was difficult for them to speak to town council members.
That's exactly where you made your mistake.
We have a motion, but we don't have to be seconded. I'm gonna ask one more time. Is there a second?
Seeing none.
I have a comment, please. As a member of the charter commission, uh, ten years ago, who helped with that wording with our attorney and, uh, uh, um, and, uh, I can tell, and what I read in the rules for the, for the council, I think it covers everything perfectly.
Well, that is, perhaps it does. But I'm just asking for a formal legal opinion to address that.
The formal legal is in that paperwork that you read last, last week.
Well, those are the rules. That's not a legal opinion. That's different.
Well, we go by the rules.
And, and this, this might just be, be me being naive. I would like to address one point in the statute that Ari brought up. Um, yes, it's completely reasonable that we need to base it on what else is being brought up in a meeting. Is there a timeframe where if someone brings a motion to the table, and anyone on town council can bring it to the table, that it needs to be brought up within a certain timeframe? That. table, that it needs to be brought up within a certain timeframe? That, I think, would be my biggest concern here to address what Ari's talking about, because maybe, yes, there might be many things that need to be talked about, but is there a certain timeframe where if someone brings it to the table, say, we need to bring it up within three weeks or five weeks or however long? Is that part of the...
So, so is that a great, great question? There's a few ways that you can do it. One, has Ari's done already. You can request it on an agenda item. If the town's business is available to do so, it gets put on there. Or, right, you as a council person at a meeting tonight, if you wanted to add some, just as we're doing right now. You could make a motion and ask if you have a second, then you vote on it.
Right.
So there's a way to do it immediate. There's a way to do it the other way. So there's, there's flexibility there already built into the system.
And if you did that, and there was not a majority saying, yes, let's do it, that doesn't mean you couldn't bring it up another time. That, it, it doesn't negate...
But you do need to, if you're going to add it to the agenda, remember there's two-thirds vote.
Right.
Yep.
But don't we have to look at the importance, right? We just cannot have anarchy. Anybody can bring anything. There's an importance to your, to ask your question while we get this last minute thanks, because...
I think the charter is clear. Any town council member can add anything, anything. I mean, it would be up to the voters to decide whether they want to elect that person again or not.
That's why we prioritize.
It's not up to the town council.
You know, a lot of people ask the mayor about topics that, you know, not just council people. Some people say they'd like to talk about something, right? And if it's a salient point, fine, just like for you. Yep, there's nothing wrong with whatever it is you want to talk about, but you could ask him prior to the meeting, and when you see that we have a topic that's going to take a long time, and then we still have a lot to go, then, then you just say, when can we have it on there? Ask, just ask. Don't assume it's never going to get there.
No one's assuming anything. I actually like the ma, no, I'm not. And I like the mayor very much, and I have confidence, if I ask him in most occasions, he would do it. But I'm trying to understand the rules because I'm new to this, and it looks to me like any town council member has the right to unilaterally put anything on the agenda and that it would have to be covered in a timely manner.
Timely manner? What, what's wrong with that?
I think timely manner is what I was trying to, to run and pick around.
And you're making an assumption because you said you heard something.
I'm not assuming anything.
A lot of us have been here forever, and we've never had any one of us turned away to have something.
Okay, but you're all part of the same party there, so, you know, I mean, there's that.
You know what? This is what I meant when I said to get rid of this guy who wants to put up this best thing. You've got to be together. That's very important. Your politics shouldn't count. And when you're sitting here, we're talking about for the good of our town. That's why we got elected. We got elected, okay? So you've got to let that little thing you have, that force field around you, and, and listen with an open mind and an open ear, because we're not always against each other. If that's what you think, I'm surprised you want it to be on the council.
I think you have a lot of assumptions about what I think, Katie, because I'm not thinking that.
Heard you overtalk us every single time.
Let's call the question.
Yeah, that's it. We already didn't, nobody voted, so we're going to go on. Okay, so Ari, yeah, Ari asked to have on the agenda, correct?
That is correct.
And is it here?
It is.
Look at that. It is.
And I appreciate it.
Okay, so here's what I'm going to ask you. Did you look up the, what goes on online? Did you look on the town website?
I did, and it was outdated.
If you look, you can find everything since I believe the first one...
It's actually outdated. It's last year's information. We don't have the information...
No, 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 no. The documents that show what went on every single year that we did this. Do you know how this started?
I didn't see that. That, the, the website's a little hard to navigate. I found a site that had the application, and the application was last year's application.
Okay, well, that's, that's an application. What you can do is on there, you can go into where you see...
www.nemilford.org.
Right, you know, okay.
You're going to click the, the tab government?
Yeah.
And you're going to go down to agendas and minutes. You're going to click agendas and minutes?
You go to meetings.
And then there's going to be a dropdown, and you're going to go down to nonprofits.
Right.
You're going to click nonprofits, and it will have, I believe, from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-five, it'll have all of the, all of the docs.
So you can look at every, every page of minutes. You can see the agendas, and you can visit, look through all of those. And then, what I was going to say is, I didn't know whether or not you had done that, is that then, come and ask questions if you have it. I think it's pretty straightforward. It's something that was started in, what, twenty eighteen, I think?
It's evidence is there.
And it was bas, it's bas, it began at twenty thousand dollars to be divided between the applicants that were deemed to be, you know, they should get it. There are, there's also a whole page that tells you what the criteria is in order to apply. In other words, you cannot duplicate a service that the town already has. That's one thing. But, you know, you have to be a nonprofit. You have to have the five oh ones and all that. So will you go on there and look through the information, and then if you have questions, this will be the perfect time for you to say to the mayor that you'd like to have a conversation or whatever about what you see there. But I have been doing that since we started, so anytime you want to talk about it, I'll be more than happy to talk to you about it.
I appreciate that very much.
It's a committee that does it.
Yes, it's a committee.
It's a committee that does it. It's not just one person.
It's a small committee, and I will tell you right now why. Because almost everybody in this town is involved in some nonprofit. You know, we're a volunteer town. There, where everywhere is volunteers. And it, you need to really consider that when you're looking at a list of other nonprofits, that you use an open mind with it. So I try to work with bipartisan people, and you'll see that in the minutes.
The town has been very generous with a number of organizations. I also serve in the Milford Refugee Resettlement, and they have benefited from that. I was really just inquiring what the process is because the website is outdated right now. It has last year's application with last February's deadline. And so I was trying to find out what the process is so I can inform other organizations.
I can send you an email, and it'll show you all the documents, and I'll just explain to you how it starts.
Well, that's for me to know personally, but I, the reason why I brought it up in this context is for the public to know. It's not for my nonprofits. It's for every other nonprofit out there.
Well, the public knows because they do see it, but that's, I don't know what more you want, but if you let me know, I'd be happy to tell everybody. I, I, it's an open book. Open book.
Will the new application be out soon?
The application doesn't change. It's just changes the date at the top. We've not had any reason to change the application.
Yeah, you can always print it and scratch it and put today's date.
Yeah.
So what is the deadline for nonprofit organizations who would want to apply for this coming year?
The deadline is, well, because it depends on the budget. Whatever the date might be, I, I can't tell you off the top of my head, but, you know, it opens up in what, Febu, I think February. Yeah, February, so...
And how much money will be distributed to the nonprofits?
Well, that depends on the budget. That depends on what we have. That's why we went from twenty to twenty-five, so...
And so when will that information be available to the nonprofits of the community?
You apply through the application, and, and that's before the budget is finalized. So you get what, you get, if you're going to get it, it's a portion of what we have.
And then if the budget's passed, then the subcommittee reviews all the applications, and then they make their recommendation, and then they're, they parcel out the twenty-five thousand that's, that's given.
So we hope to keep it at twenty-five.
I just want to say with, with respect to keeping an open mind about things, I'm not criticizing anyone. I'm learning about the process. I want the public to understand about the process. I'm not criticizing you or the mayor or anyone else here in this context.
I'm not thinking you're criticized. I just want you to take your time and learn a little. That's all together, like we all did. And I am always willing to, anything that I am involved...
I didn't hear that, Sal. What was that?
I know, I know.
No, I know, what did you say?
I said, don't try to play you're naive, because you're not.
Okay.
I love you too.
Okay, so let's move along.
We're talking about working together, Sal.
I know, I know.
Okay, we have an, we have an item here.
We can talk later about it.
Sure.
Let's go to D.
Yeah, I'm going to move right along. Ari, you know, you can contact me. I'll send you anything you cannot find. Item six D.
And this is, I spoke with Mark Mankin. He runs the Sullivan Farm for us, and he has been the one that's kind of spearheaded the agroeducational building project. That's the barn facility that we're going to be putting in. And, you know, he had a hip replaced, and just, he told me he's up in age, and he, I'm just telling you what he told me. And right now, he feels that his efforts could be better used by just continuing the work of the farm. So I had, here at the town coun, here, I'm asking the town council to allow us to move this project to the municipal building committee for a review.
Well, I, I didn't, I wanted the mayor to describe it. So I'd like to move that we move the Sullivan Farm Agroeducational Building Project to the Municipal Building Committee for their review.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Item seven A. I'd like to move that we approve a action on the following grants. The town in New Milford was awarded for year end twenty-six a DUI enforcement grant of twenty-six thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and forty-two cents from the Connecticut Department of Transportation Highway Safety Office. The DUI enforcement grant provides funding to law enforcement agencies to conduct high-visibility impaired driving enforcement such as sobriety checkpoints, dedicated DUI patrols for the grant period of December fifth, twenty twenty-five through September twelfth of twenty twenty-six. Funds will be received into an account determined by the Director of Finance.
Second.
Thank you, Paul.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Item seven B. I'd like to move that we approve that the New Milford Youth Agency receive a grant from the Connecticut, accept the funds from the Connecticut Community Foundation for their Pride in the Hills, it's the Pride in the Hills Foundation, five thousand dollars.
Second.
The funds are to be used for supporting LGBTQIA youth and Allies for Awareness and Programming.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Zach?
I was just, I'm curious as to, I am all in favor for it. I'm just curious as to whether there have been specific plans as to how these funds are going to be used.
So this has been used every, I think this is the fifth year of this.
Okay.
One of them is for the Pride Prom that, that is housed at the Max. Some of the other ones is for mentoring.
Right.
The LGBTQ youth. Also, it's from additional programs. They have, I believe, every Monday, they have a meeting at the youth agency as well. So this is something that Jason and the youth agency have, have been able to get this grant for, I believe, it's four years, five years now.
I think it's five, yep.
For example, I've, I've been aware of the Pride Prom. I know of all of these other initiatives. Now I know a little bit more about it with my cohort. That's why I wanted to ask.
Absolutely.
Glad you did.
And I, I would just like to acknowledge how awesome it is to live in a town that supports this across party lines. I just think that's amazing, and I appreciate that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, everyone.
Item C. I'd like to move that we approve the municipal resolution authorizing application and acceptance of D.
So this one I'm going to ask, we're not prepared for that yet, if we could just...
I take it back.
If we could just table that.
No, no, nothing else.
We'll table that.
Now, I would, I would like to see if the council would add to the agenda, and this is discussion and possible action on the Northville Roof Project.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
Elementary school roof, sorry.
Don't we have to have Parlado in the company with us?
No. No. I'd like to move that we add to the agenda a discussion about the Northville Roof.
Spend the rules.
Yep.
Yes, we did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. So this was, with your approval, last, last meeting, we'd sent this to the Municipal Building Committee as we're looking at a timeline to have this work done in the summertime. And as you remember, we already had the five million dollars appropriated several, several months ago. In talking with Matt Cunningham, who will be kind of spearheading the project for us, he's the facilities director for the schools, we talked to the Municipal Building Committee of get, of using the state reimbursement funds that we can get for projects such as these. Matt did talk to the Connecticut Department of, of the DAS, the Administrative Services, and even though it's confirmed that we have five million dollars appropriated, it's for roof repairs at town buildings. So they're asking that we be specific. So there's going to be some resolutions that we would ask, right, Olga? The first one being that we would want the five million dollars to be specific to...
Assigned.
Assigned.
Assigned and authorized specifically for the Northville Roof Project.
So it's no other.
And could you make that motion, Katie?
Yes, I'd like to move, that, what, you mean that you want to go forward with that?
With, we have to put that, we have to put that moniker on there, that it goes to the Northville Elementary School Roof Project.
So I'd like to move that we apply to this motion for, is the...
The five million dollars that's already been appropriated.
Yeah, what is it, what's the name of that?
To the D, to the...
Just give me a, so it goes in.
How do you want it verbalized, Olga?
I guess a motion to authorize it and assign.
Right, no, but the five million is, what's the name of that money?
Oh, previously authorized bond.
Oh, it is. Okay, all right, so, yeah. Move that we, for the previously authorized bond of five million dollars that we use a...
For the Northville.
Assigned to the Northville.
Right, assigned to Northville.
Assigned for the Northville Elementary School Roof Project.
Yeah, I was going to say elementary, right. Roof project, got it.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any discussion? Zach?
I apologize for continuously raising my hand.
No, absolutely.
Now you learn.
What information do we have about what needs to be done on it? Where's the repair that needs to happen?
Absolutely. So we had, had a full meeting on it here, also at Board of Ed in their facilities department and at the Board of Ed itself. That roof is, I believe, almost thirty years old.
Right.
And it's exceeded its life. And one of the capital request items that in, in the Board of Ed had asked for is this roof. In a year or so, we're probably going to be looking at Hill and Plain to do a roof there as well. We hired Dean Petricelli to do a analysis on what type of roof structure it could be. He gave us some, some plans.
Some options.
And, and some options. And the Municipal Building Committee settled on option, I believe, three, which was one of the options that the Board of Ed had deemed that they liked as well. And we're all looking, because there's so much work to be done, you have to have kind of a timing process, because Superintendent Parlato and Matt and the teachers want to get their work, roof work done in the summertime.
Yeah.
So that's what Matt sent me this on Friday night, late Friday night. So, we're not late, I think it was around four, three or four o'clock, but to get it on the agenda, because what's going to happen is now they have to apply to the school for that, and we get a reimbursement of, I think, like forty-two or forty-seven cents on the dollar.
Right.
So that's kind of where we are with that so far.
As an educator, a past contractor, I just was asking, because I'm very curious, and I care a lot about the schools, so I just wanted a little bit more information. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Zach, I recommend, now we're going into budget, you will see from Dr. Parlato, she'll send an email to all of you, where you can go and tour all of the buildings. They'll show you kind of the needs and wants of the district as well.
I, I've already been...
Okay, here we go. Awesome.
Oh, you already went there.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? And now it's required by the state is three more resolves?
Yes.
So, Katie?
These aren't, these are motions.
Are motions.
Yes, so the following motions. Resolve that the New Milford Town Council authorizes a New Milford Public Schools Superintendent to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the roof replacement at the Northville Elementary School. Be it also resolved that the Municipal Building Committee is hereby established as the Building Committee with regard to the roof replacement at the Northville Elementary School, and be it resolved that the New Milford Town Council hereby authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the roof placement at the Northville Elementary School.
Second. Second by Paul. Any discussion on these? And these are required from state DA, DAS to be compliant for the reimbursement. Yep. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Zach, you learned more about roofs here.
Good, okay.
That's why you want, that's why you brought it up.
All right, so that, now we're back. We're, let's see, did I even do the, no, I didn't.
The police...
No, I didn't get to seven C.
No, we're not, yeah, we're tabling.
Oh, you're tabling? Okay, I thought maybe you just wanted to table it for that. Okay, so item eight A. I'd like to move that we approve for the New Milford Police Department a donation of five hundred dollars from J.A. Rosa Construction. Item eight B. I'd like Item eight B. I'd like to move, also in this one motion, that a generous donation of two thousand dollars from Barbara Colgan, a graduate of our latest Citizens Police Academy.
Sixth one, sixth, sixth academy.
She is donating one thousand dollars to go to our drone, to the PD's drone unit and one thousand dollars for other departmental needs.
Second. Any discussion on the donation?
Very nice, very nice.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, everyone.
Okay, and I, item nine. I'd like to move that we approve the additional six hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred dollars for the previously awarded grant for Sand Road Bridge Construction Project. This is one hundred percent reimbursable grant with no town match requirement.
So we have Jack and Chuck up here.
And that's the best it gets.
We have a second, yep. Yes, sir.
Who seconded?
Right.
Sorry, or you?
Me.
And so. And so.
I can hear you all the time, but I.
So practicing this, there's no additional cost to the town, correct? This is just an upping on the grant money. So if you guys could talk about that.
Correct, yeah. Real quick, so Chuck Ballard, Design Engineer for the Department of Public Works. Uh, original grant award was two point seven million dollars for the reconstruction of Sand Road Bridge. Due to some excessive soil disposal testing, um, the, there was an increase of about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Through the grant process, this is a hundred percent reimbursement. Uh, this, this bridge as well as the Van Car Road Bridge, that's already completed. This is through the federal local grant program through the Connecticut DOT. It's a hundred percent reimbursement. But because of that, the town is forced to lay the money out as capital ahead of time. In order to do that, we need town council approval. It is a hundred percent reimbursed after the fact. So we're here just seeking the approval just to basically put that money out in force. Olga's been great to work with through this whole process. But again, this is just six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in addition to the original approval. It's come forth through a supplemental PAL, which is how DOT gives it to us. And with your approval, we'll continue this process. And like the mayor said, it is scheduled to be open before winter. Winter's on the twenty-first. It should be open in time for that.
I was wondering.
Uh, they are scheduled to do their final pour of concrete tomorrow, paving next week and guide rail soon thereafter. So we are on track to have it open soon.
What's the coldest temperature for the concrete that you can tolerate?
It, it, so right now, they, they actually have ground heaters out there to keep the ground warm. So it's not so much temperature-wise really. It's keeping the ground warm and transportation, transportation temperature. As long as they keep that asphalt to a certain temperature, they put it down at a certain temperature, we're good to go. So as long, we're monitoring that. We have an inspection firm on there as, as they're working to monitor those temperatures. Uh, they are holding those temps currently. Again, they, the ground heaters, you know, they're, they're keeping that temperature.
I've seen the bridges where they wrap, they up towards Binghamton.
Yep, they blanket everything and they're pumping it full of hot water, basically.
They did it in record time, too, so.
Absolutely. Helps with the caring process, so.
So does anybody have any questions for Chuck and for Jack?
That's the date, the twenty-first?
I don't have the date offhand, but they, they, they're on track to open it very soon.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
And who's going to be?
I don't know. We need, we need somebody.
And before, before we do that, just for those watching, those in the audience, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy Hanukkah and. Yes. And see you next year.